Good evening, everybody. We'd like to call to order tonight's regular City Commission meeting for March 15th, 2021. Tabitha, can we please get a roll call?
Maryann?
Here.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Badley?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkerson?
Present.
Thank you. For our occasion tonight, we have Pastor David Crook from First Southern Baptist Church.
Thank you for having me tonight. Anything specific you'd like me to ask God to do for us tonight or in the days ahead?
Everything.
Everything? Well, you don't want an all-night prayer meeting, do you?
No, of course not.
Go for it. Well, I'll try to be a little shorter than that. But anything specific for anyone? All right. Father in heaven, I thank you for this city. I thank you for the people that live here. I thank you for the great place that it is to raise a family, to be a good neighbor, to be live at peace with one another. And Father, those days have been challenged lately. There's been a lot happening in our world, in our culture, in the last year and a half that has just made life tough. This city needs you, and we need you desperately. We need your peace. We need your help. We need your wisdom. There are many that need your healing. There are many that need your comfort. And Father, this body that is gathered here tonight, the City Commission that is here before us, needs you as well. They need your wisdom. They need your guidance. They need your humility. They need your help in order to lead this city well. I thank you for them and ask you to bless them. Ask you to bless them from on high with the things that I have asked, the wisdom, the humility, and the help. God, put love in their hearts for their neighbors in all around this city. And may we in this place come to know that surely we have more available to us in Jesus Christ than we have that would ever divide us or hurt us based on the laws and rules of men. I pray, oh God, for this city to grow, for it to grow economically, grow in population, and certainly to grow in love and charity toward each other. Most of all, I pray it would grow in a knowledge of you as a God who made us, who loves us, who gave your life for us, and calls us into much better than we can do on our own. Please move in this city, oh God. It is in your name that I pray, Lord Jesus, for your sake and your glory alone, and ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Would everyone please rise and remove your hats for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we don't have any proclamations or recognitions tonight. We will move into personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the City Commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at (316) 321-9100 by 5:00 PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes, and any presentation is for informational purposes only, and no action will be taken. And tonight, for personal appearance, we have Linda Jolly and El Dorado Inc. here to present their annual report.
Tabitha, do you know where our presentations are loaded? Okay.
Can you count the phone?
I don't see it. Unless you want me to go through PowerPoint?
No, not at all.
That's mine.
Who did send it to you?
Well, it's not to Christina. Okay, well, we might not have the PowerPoint. You can just listen. I can send you all copies of this so you have it to refer back to tomorrow. So we're going to talk about 2021. Definitely when I was here about the same time last year, we had no anticipation of the pandemic and what that was going to do with our businesses. But we do have some project highlights. Many projects take more than one year. Sometimes we work with them for a long time. But our first project that ended with the closing of an IRB was for BG Products last year. They kind of finished up the very beginning of this year. The pandemic hit, and then, you know, that made it more difficult for them. There were times that their employees were at home and so forth, but I believe that they've had a good year. We saw that project overall spend about $38 million. That's going to equate, and I'm going to give you this number for each one of these projects, and it's the amount of tax the city only will receive from that project if we base it on their assessed valuation at county level as well as today's mail addresses. So eventually, the city will see about $284,000 from that project each year. We, you passed an IRB for Mares Fertilizer in conjunction with the county. It was about $16 million that IRB has not closed yet. The project still hasn't had a really strong start. They have their pad site. They're continuing to do bids and tweak other things. But overall, that project has about $16 million with your IRB. We'll see about $70,000 taxed directly to the city. Keep in mind that part of that building will be in the county and part of it will be in the city, so that does make a difference. That's going to create about 15 jobs. The BG Project went ahead and created some additional jobs, but at the end of the year, they ended up with about 117 as their total employment here in El Dorado. You remember when we did the Union Tank Car Water Line? That project, the first phase was about $7 million. Taxes, most of their project had been equipment. They're spending about $10,000 a year on city tax, but they do have 100 employees. They, one of the incentives that they used was that high-performance incentive program that came out of the state, which was a tax credit to them. We saw the tip with Orshelins, $5 million project, about $49,000 in city tax from that. Remember that in the beginning, that will help pay for the infrastructure that went into that area. But we have to agree that losing the old building, the replat, the new building from there of theirs, and then three additional building spaces is a big improvement over what we had. So that company that retains about 20 jobs with Orshelins, Scooters, and I think Scooters is kind of a fun story because the people that were mowing the lot for the owner when the old Becker Tire Building was still there, saw a young man looking at the property and got their name and phone number and called me. And I said, okay, you know, I'll work on this, but don't tell anybody. Let's give them a chance to figure out if they really want to do something. So young franchisee, and over time, and a lot of answers and traffic studies and all kinds of things, you know, they decided to go ahead and build, waited kind of till the end of the year, trying to see how the pandemic was going to impact their other business. But in the meantime, my little friend called about every other week. Can I tell you? No. Don't tell anybody until they do. But that has created 18 jobs, and we'll see about $3,500 a year in revenue. 142 North Main, you had the chance to tour that project. Phase one on that project has amounted to about $500,000. There was the acquisition of the facility. There's the matching funds to the grant. And then there's the work that the owners did themselves, so. Jobs, that's hard to say. Right now, we have at least 10 jobs in the building with all the different businesses. And as with all of our downtown improvements, we don't see a lot of tax impact. We might see a million dollars spent there. Our part of the taxes right now are about $1,400 a year. It might double before it's all over, but we just don't see the value. It's expensive to redo those buildings, but there isn't a market increase in the buildings like we think there would be. We're seeing the start of a Smoothie King right now. Worked on that with a franchise broker out of Kansas City. Does have local ownership. We'll see about $450,000 invested there. And taxes revenues will be about $6,300. Did a CID for Super 8. They have about eight employees. $16,600 a year is our revenue with that, and then did rehab a lot of that. So you take those projects, and our city tax on those will amount to about $439,000. So just a little over four mils, you know, for that group of projects. Some of them are going to finish in '21, some of them will go beyond. I've worked on that Mares Fertilizer project for three years already, so some things take some time. We had two housing projects, of course, the 32 single-family units. Interesting to note there, about $5.3 million capital investment, $34,000 worth of city tax. Keep in mind that the industrial or commercial properties pay tax at 25% of appraised value, and housing is only 11.5. And then a project that I worked on a lot, hasn't moved forward much, except we have seen a replat for duplexes on some property along Central G D W addition. We did see some pretty belighted housing that has come out, and the area's all been cleared. It just hasn't moved forward with the building yet. You remember the Tesla pitch? Interesting, we didn't get Tesla plant, but we did see, you know, a lot of raised awareness, a lot of free marketing and advertising nationwide, and a lot of response back on that. At the end of the year, we had four large responses to the Kansas Department of Commerce. Two of them were active at the time. Today, only one of them is. But the first one was for biotech industry. It's the one that remains open and active. We've seen several different requests for information on this. It's about $165 million in capital, 100 jobs. They want about $264,000 gallons of water a day and about a 650,000 square foot building. One of the dead projects was a food project for 40 million. One of the active projects at the end of the year was food. The substantial thing about it was they wanted 1.9 million gallons of water a day. We know that has been one of our targets. And then finally, there was a composites project, pretty big, 737 million, 1,120 jobs. Bit pretty big for us, 200 acres, wanted 600,000 gallons of water a day, so, and a 1.8 million square foot building. So we are seeing these larger projects come this way. We have the one active project from last year, and so far this year, we've got two new $150 million. Both of them are food projects, so we'll kind of see how we do on that. So when the pandemic hit, nobody knew what was going to happen to our business community. Lots of programs started becoming available for people, but it was very confusing about health and whether they were eligible and so forth. We tried to keep up and had great partnership with Main Street and Chamber. Chamber took the lead on trying to accumulate the different programs and publish them. In the meantime, we created a list of about 165 of our retail service businesses. We split them up between the three groups. El Dorado Inc. took all of lodging, and then in addition to that, we had 47 additional businesses. We made contact by phone, by email. We continued to send them programs that were available. And although for our 52 businesses, I do know who was able to access different programs, but I really don't think that's probably public information in that way. But to tell you that, we did see the idle loans out of SBA. Those were direct loans through SBA. We saw three or four other projects I worked with that received funds. Network Kansas had a $15,000 grant that was awarded here in El Dorado. The state and county Spark funds were well utilized. All of the money was gone. We didn't get as many out of the state as we would have hoped for. They kind of pushed him down and said, you know, compete at your county level. I know that we got more than our initial share of the county Sparks funds, so that was nice. And then we worked with notification to Butler Royal Electric, and they were able to get a Sparks grant. We had your $150,000 city grants, $10,000 Chamber grants. And Portia State University built a break-even model that we sent out to the businesses. It was important because if they utilized it, they would know what they needed to make it to the end of the year and how much money they had to pay salaries. And that's a little different look at your business. You're usually not thinking about, okay, what's it take to stay open? And what does it take to pay employees? And how many employees can I afford moving forward? And then we saw the CDBG CD grant that was 132,000. We did help coordinate that with the Kansas Department of Commerce. We worked with SCED to help the 142 original grant that was funded for 257,000. And along the way during the year, the Chamber, Main Street, Butler Community College, we've all talked about incubator studies, incubator programs. We haven't seen anything evolve yet, but we have done a lot of research on that. Inc. continues to be involved in organizations, Wichita Area Outlook Team, Greater Wichita Park Team, the Team Kansas, and the Kansas Economic Development Association, the Regional Economic Development Group. Didn't have much Holly Frontier campus last year with all of the separation and mask wearing and stuff, but still continue to monitor that. And then the Kansas Regional Framework for Growth at the state level. There hadn't been a state economic development plan in over 30 years. So we've been involved in that. Probably one of the biggest things that we continued last year was the Develop El Dorado program. And of course, you saw some of the first logo development website and so forth, but in about July, we started targeting our businesses that were identified through the Kansas Global site. We had 15 targeted email blasts last year. We had about 494 site selectors and real estate consultants across the nation. Those were going to, as well as the businesses that were identified with the Gazelle AI. We saw over 7,000, we saw over 7,000 of those emails going to those businesses through the year. At the end, we had a 14.59% open rate. It yielded 22 high-potential leads by the end of the year. And then we saw some unique click-throughs and things like that. The 22 identified leads, beginning in January, we started direct mail to them and follow-up, personal follow-up. I have had two of the first five contacts that we made express an interest, once the pandemic is over, interest in El Dorado and hearing more about our sites. Additionally, at the end of the year, for some of the prospects we had, we started putting together, people aren't traveling, they can't do the site tours. And so virtual site tours has become a thing. We did have probably the first virtual site tour put together of anyone. We've received additional funding from EverGee so that we can continue, and we have through the first part of the year, continue to work towards producing those self-guided tours so that people that can't come here can still get a good feel of what the community has to offer. We had 105 companies that have specifically visited the website, Develop El Dorado. Remember that we don't publicize that like, we're not looking for how many views can we get, how many quality views can we get? So we had 1,400 click-throughs from those, some of the ads that we did, the Google AdWords and so forth. They're spending about 23 seconds on the site and looking at a little over two and a half pages. We had 84% new website visits among those visits that we've had. You know, we did work with the Cody Foster Sales Tax Agreement Transfer. We've helped with the OCI and Confab EDXs and also helped them with their reporting this year. And then in addition to that, we've had 30 other open projects. 16 of them are pending today, and 14 of them have completed from last year. And my last comment is just in reference to other things that happen in the community. Not everything that happens here is something that we touch, but I did want to give recognition to some of the larger projects that continually seem to be investing in our community. One of them is Ergon had a over $200,000 project this year, and I think that's at least the third year in a row that we've seen a larger project come from them. Butler Community College is continuing to invest. They had about a $780,000 project. SNL Enterprises, which is storage upon six, has continued to grow. They had a $140,000 project. We saw Arby's do a facelift at 150,000. I think this is the third Walmart project that we've seen since, two since the new bill, $804,000. EverGee invested about $205,000. Butler County Commission, 154,000, and then we'll see the Smoothie King that'll complete here in 2021. So that's an overview. Lots of things happened. We did talk to a lot of businesses this year that needed help. We're still hearing from businesses that are needing assistance as a result of COVID-19. Today, SBA issued, probably because of the legislation that's been signed at the federal level, we're seeing new programs coming out again. So we'll be seeing applications again this year for the cares. They're going to have specialty restaurant program this year. We're also going to work with shuttered businesses, things like your movie theaters, places of gathering that just had to close because, you know, the social distancing and so forth. So lots of dollars coming back out. And then we do have two ag-related projects. It'll probably work maybe in the new cares money that's coming out. So be happy to answer questions. Be easier if you can see it. I'll get this to you tomorrow.
I mean, and I just want to go over just a little bit of the math. So we sent out roughly 7,000 emails or hits, and it went down to 1,400 clicks. And then you talk, 105 contacted and then down to two that you're talking to. I mean...
It's a little bit different because the 1,400 is from a different resource. Kind of due to, we had about 600 people in total. We sent 15 pieces too. We had 22 of them that opened absolutely everything.
Right.
Of those, we have made direct contact with five. Two of the five have shown interest. Now, there are other avenues. We're getting ready to send about 1,500 or about three times 500 additional pieces that are going to go out in the next once, one each month. We also are going to broaden our group to include data centers. That was something that was identified by the state for us, that they thought that we could be a good data center site. We've done some background work on that, about what it's going to take, and will we be able to supply what they want? They're telling us that we can. And so as I said, that's going to launch another group of projects. And then, you know, we said we had to tweak this, and we've learned a lot on the tweaking side. And when I say that, one of the things I will say is not all of the companies identified by Kansas Global were big enough to come and make a difference for us. And that, where you get to those 22, you know, those are kind of the high end. We've got other smaller businesses, but you know, if we're looking for a high-end water user or someone that's going to make a significant capital investment, then we're going to work that highest and best use group first. We've got a lot of companies to visit with. We're getting, we're getting to the right people. That was something that we've had to work on a little bit. But we are getting to the right people. And then frankly, if we just get my replacement hired and we have some time, I mean, we haven't had additional help since the first of the year. And so that'll make a big difference in the next few months. So I hope to have somebody on board, maybe full-time as quickly as May 1. And I think you'll see a lot of change in those numbers in the May, June, July, and August timeframe.
Well, but my, my, my follow-up question to that was, was that, can you talk about how that compared to in the past? Before, before, you know, I mean, would you send out 7,000 emails before you had this new program?
Oh, no.
Okay, and that, that's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to gauge what, I mean, if it's...
How effective is that, is what you're trying to gauge?
Well, no, I mean, it's...
Well, no, I think it's, it's a fair question.
I, I, I mean, and it's really not, I'm just trying to understand, I mean, we're, it's the first year that we're, you've had this, and, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around how that, you wouldn't have sent that many out before.
Oh, no.
And, and it wouldn't have been as specific? Is that kind of what I'm getting at too, is that they're...
Prior to us being proactive about this, and I will say this, definitely raises our awareness in the Kansas marketplace. In fact, the state of Kansas is following what we're doing. But in the past, by the time we, well, okay, so you put an ad in a magazine, or you went to, we went to these consultant dinners, we might, I'm trying to think how I want to say this, we would have these contacts, but we might reach out once, twice to 100 companies total. Many times didn't have an opportunity to follow up and definitely didn't have a chance to pick and choose. Keep in mind that these companies are out of those NAICS codes that we identified, what we wanted, which is still so totally different than these things we're answering. I'm still answering right now, we've got two food and is it biotech companies? We don't know who they are. We don't know if you really, really want them. On the other side, these companies, the 22 companies, I know who they are. I can find out, you know, with research, almost everything about them, as well as what you get out of this Kansas Global program. We know these are companies we want. There were some companies that came up, and it just doesn't make sense for us, so you don't pursue that. I mean, we don't grow pineapple here. We're not going to can pineapple here. Now, we might be a distribution center, but we're not going to do that. Or we're not going to do Chili's, you know, from South America. They don't grow here, you know, New Mexico maybe. So as I said, it gives us a big advantage. Do we still need to tweak? Yes. And we're just soon to have the second set of companies. And what I keep saying is, that's all good, but we still have a big group of companies that we're not ready to let go of yet and say, it's okay. You know, we still want to work and continue to send information until they tell you don't. And we haven't had any of those lately. In the beginning, we had a few fallouts, a few people that didn't want to see. But we're learning better how to work with the consultants comparative. We used to go out and have a dinner with them. This time, we had to have a virtual site visit with them. Two of the five consultants responded to information I had sent asking for more information. Send us brochures on all your property in case we have somebody, you know, things like that. We didn't have that before.
Right.
And then we have the opportunity to... And then we have the opportunity to continue to follow up with them. So a lot more directed than it was. Anything else?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, the, the bottom line number on the taxes that you talked about, on the tax revenue coming into the city of four-hundred-and-thirty on four-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars is, that's significant. And you guys have a lot of work that you do clearly, that you do every year. I think it's important to point out that, that our partner agencies, along with staff, have made a, have had a huge impact this year with the pandemic and with COVID and with helping us to identify and, and just wanted to make sure everyone understood this. Helping us to identify and be able to work with those businesses within our community that were, that were in need. Again, between, between Inc. and Main Street and the Chamber and this work the staff's done, we've been able to really help a lot of, a lot of our local businesses. So that's, I, I think that's a big kudos to, to, to you at Inc. and to our partner agencies. You know, you listed an awful lot that, that you guys got done in twenty-twenty. And with the end result being, we're going to see, just from that work in twenty-twenty, we're going to see, you know, four-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars in taxes at some point, not, you know, not today.
Not today.
But with these IRBs, and we know how those work, but as those start to come to fruition, that's going to be, have a significant impact on our budget and, and our ability to, to do things at the city level as well. So I appreciate that work that you guys do.
You can see that you've got one of your IRBs that'll start paying in twenty-twenty-two, I believe it is. Three-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars out of one project.
Yeah, it's going to be huge.
As I said, it builds on itself. So it's, it's interesting. And like I said, no project, to be honest with you. Projects don't really happen annually. You, like I said, we've worked with Mears. Scott and I both have been at Mears, I can't tell you how many times in three years to get where we are today. So, and it's not, it's just, that's the pace that they're, that they're moving to do really a very large expansion for them, so.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda for tonight is public comment. Public comments are persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding items that are not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the City Commission. You can do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes. And any, any presentation is for information purposes only and no action will be taken. We have a big attendance tonight. I'm, I'm guessing some of you are here for the public hearings, paving of Hunt Road, paving of Fifth. We've got a District 142 public hearing. Are some of you here to speak during those times? And then I know that some of you are here with questions or comments with regards to the EFABC discussion we're going to have tonight. Can you raise your hand if you're here for that part of the conversation tonight? For the stadium conversation? Sorry for using the acronym. What I would, what I would suggest is, you know, as we've welcomed the comment during our discussion items, when we've dealt with, with the mask mandate or with kind of big issues that have come before us for discussion, we've oftentimes been able to, rather than have those addressed to public comment, move those into that agenda item. You guys have any objections with doing that tonight and being able to welcome some comment from the crowd during that discussion?
That's fine, on the topic, yeah.
On topic. And with the majority of the people in the crowd being here for that, do you want to leave it at number sixteen or fifteen? Or do you want to move it up to right after the consent agenda and then get it out of the way so we can get them out of here for the night?
Oh, move it up.
Okay, so we're going to make a brief, before we get to the consent agenda, just to let everyone know, we're going to make a brief adjustment to the agenda. We're going to move the EFABC or BG Stadium discussion to agenda item number. Well, we'll go right after consent. We need to do the consent agenda first. So right after the consent agenda. So other than the public hearings or EFABC BG Stadium, is there anyone here that would like to make public comment tonight? Perfect. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda tonight is the approval of City Commission minutes from March twenty, March first, two thousand twenty-one and special City Commission minutes from February fourth, gosh, February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Approval of appropriation ordinance number zero-two-dash-two-one in the amount of one million, six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirteen dollars, seventy-nine cents. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Five oh.
Tabitha, you got those, that note that I had for you Wednesday? Okay, perfect.
So we're going to move into the next item on the agenda here, which is going to be the discussion with regards to the EFABC, the Educational Facilities Authorities Authority of Butler County. Okay, which is BG Stadium. Do you want to introduce this, David, and talk about it or?
Sure I can. So City Commission, per your request, I prepared a letter that I sent to the EFABC with respect to your concerns about the ongoing membership of the city in the EFABC. The EFABC responded on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one with their response to the city. You all have been provided a copy of that letter last Wednesday. And so I think we're ready to discuss. If you recall, the bylaws of the EFBC state that the, any party wishing to leave the EFABC or terminate its membership in the EFABC has to notify the other parties by May fifteenth before removal for the following June. So with that, I'll just scan it over to you all for discussion.
So would you guys like to hear some comments from the crowd? Or do you guys want to discuss first?
Let's go ahead and have them, them talk.
Okay.
We can have ours afterwards.
So I would welcome some public comment to the podium. If you come to the podium to make public comment, we'd like your name and address. And we'd like to try to limit your public comment to three minutes or less, please.
Mr. Mayor, before we start, if you could have them remove their masks when they talk that way, the people at home can hear them.
Could you remove your mask before you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm Ray Cannell, twenty-five-twenty Chase here in El Dorado. Grew up in El Dorado, an attorney here for the last forty-two years. And I'm here this evening because I'm general counsel for BG Products, which has invested in this community in the last ten years, over eighty-five million dollars in a new manufacturing plant and a distribution center. And I can tell you without any hesitation, in my capacity as general counsel and on the board, that the, one of the significant things that influenced BG to come to El Dorado, because we had land in Wichita, we had land in Derby, we had several communities that wanted our expansion, was the fact that the city cooperated with the school district and the college in a number of projects, from the recreation facility to the YMCA to this specific sports complex. And I'm pleased to announce that BG had contributed a million, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, donated that to the El Dorado community for this BG Products Veteran Sports Complex. I don't think you recognize how important it is to industry that's looking for a community, the quality of life. And it certainly added to the young people's ability to do their sports and to be proud of El Dorado. I just wanted to start out the conversation by saying, I don't discount how important, from Linda Jolly's El Dorado Inc. presentation, that you working with other entities in the community, being supportive and being continued partners makes a difference. And I, and I point to BG Products as one of those differences. So I'll stand for any questions, but otherwise I wanted to emphasize that it's not just necessarily dollar and cents. It's, it's image, it's cooperation, it's quality of life. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Ray. Thank you.
I, I do have one, one question though, sir. You, you listed the YMCA. Is the city on the YMCA's board?
I don't know the answer to that. I was president of YMCA here in El Dorado for a couple of years, but it's been a while. So I can't tell you whether there's a city on the board.
David, are we on the, do we have a representative?
We don't specifically have a representative.
I just, it's project, we, I'm just trying to understand all these, put all the pieces together.
Sure. On this particular one, I did the legal work to set up the entity that did the funding and helped raise the money. And the city has one-third of the positions on, on the board. So you have a significant say in what happens in the facility use in, in future. So hopefully the latter that was drafted addressed some of your concerns. But we appreciate your support. We appreciate your concerns and hopefully you recognize that this is important to the community to continue to support. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Next, somebody want to come on up?
Herb Llewellyn, sixteen sixty-one Pennsylvania Street here in El Dorado. And to your question, the city manager, when I was here and when Stan was here, always was on the board at the Y. So I, I don't know, can't tell you more than that. I know I was and I know Stan was.
Good information.
So I can't, can't help, but I do know that.
Thank you.
I wanted to just talk a little bit about this. And I guess I'm kind of sad that you're even talking about it. I know you can. And for me, it was one of these issues where should you talk about it? And, and in my mind, the answer is no. The commission had a thorough understanding about what they were doing. They wanted to use the stadium. They wanted to be a partner. They wanted to show people like Ray that the city saw the benefit of having partners to keep costs down on projects that everyone's going to utilize, City Commission plan on using it. They were going to have their rec events there. They were going to have concerts. They were going to have events there. And so, and that was going to be a big part of your, bringing people into town. I can't remember what that agency was that you internalized. And so anyhow, you had a plan. And one of the things that I remember coming out was the talk about how hard it was going to be. And someone that had lived here all their life said, well, if it wasn't hard, it would have been done fifty years ago. And so, you know, I guess my challenge would be to have your staffs understand the problems that you're experiencing and don't throw out the baby with the dishwater. Have people be accountable for actions or inactions. And as an example, that I never believed in my career that you can winterize a building. The way to winterize a building is turn on the heat. Well, after the first time we had a fire hydrant blow up and ruin a ton, ton of stuff, you know, that should have been the clue for everyone else that thought you could winterize. But you're just, I mean, you cannot, you got to turn the heat on. You gotta, you just can't. You can try to winterize, but you're never going to get it done. And you can go to our facilities and look at the pieces of tin that are screwed onto the wall because our pipes freeze because we don't do it. And so instead of having a good-looking facility, you have a piece of tin sitting over a hole in a wall and you've moved your urinal or your toilets because you're not planning very well. And so I guess I just challenge y'all to do the work. But in my mind, I guess I, I want you to use it. And I don't have kids in four-ninety. I don't have any kids in, at the college. I do live in El Dorado and I do want to go to concerts. I mean, Lauren, I went to Denver last year to see a guy. And I'm not the only one that does that. I think it's a great way to expose people to El Dorado. And, and I just assume you use it and along with our other assets that we have. That's all.
Appreciate it, Ray. Thank you. Who else?
Hello, Tessa Young, fifteen thirty-five Southwest Butler Road, Benton. Hi, I'm a senior at El Dorado High School. I've been going to El Dorado since preschool. I've lived in El Dorado almost my whole life since middle school. And I've seen you guys take a lot of things away. Well, not specifically you guys, but we lost the drive-in movie theater when I was a kid. We lost the, what was it, the skating rink. And BG is where we play our games. We need it. And we tore down the one behind Jefferson when we built the new school. So there's really nowhere for us to go to play our games. We have the middle school field, but it's, it's not enough room. There's not enough places for people to sit and come watch like family. And I just think a lot of things have gone and we really need it. There's no more else for us to go. And I think I speak for anyone that uses the field. I'm planning on going to Butler after I get done this year. And I wanted to try out for the soccer team, the women's soccer team on the, at Butler. And that's also where they play their games. They practice there. And I think everyone could benefit with keeping the BG Stadium. And I know that if you pull your funding for it, it will go under and we won't have anywhere to go. And then the school will ask for, for more money from you guys to build a stadium at the school or somewhere else. And I think it'd just be more beneficial to keep your funding and keep the stadium. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Who else we got?
My name is Zach Whittenburg, seventeen thirty Lakeland Court. I'm a senior here at EHS. I played football and basketball throughout my four years of high school. I was asked to speak tonight for us athletes. I know we have a group of athletes here today, players who played sports all through our high school regarding the funding for BG Stadium that we all use. And I was asked to speak tonight for all of us in particular that have played and are still playing at BG Stadium through sports. And so I thought it'd be a great opportunity to explain how much the stadium means to me and all the other players and athletes. With football being my main focus and sport that I chose to pursue, BG Stadium is a very special place to me, along with many others. Right around when I started playing tackle football, BG was just, it was just built. And I was able to play there as a little kid almost every Saturday. And I thought it was the coolest thing ever, being able to play at a stadium that size and that quality as just a little kid in Little League. And from middle school to high school, I've been lucky enough to call it home field for, for years. And it serves as a place where the town and community can all come together on Friday night to watch a football team, just like this past fall. We've never had that much community support like we ever had. Like, I mean, like I said, I'm speaking for all these kids in the back. Like, you don't understand how much like it does for a young kid like me to have that much support on a Friday night and all your cheermen supporting on you, you know, to win the game. So it does a lot. And it's a few, just a player down, if you look it up and seeing the crowd fill in and support you is something I'll never forget. And having a stadium like BG does that and it allows it to happen. I think one of the most important things in a town is having that stadium or that field that brings everyone together to support their local sport teams. For the athletes, knowing that you have the support of the city and the town is, it's a huge deal. It's a big one. Lastly, myself along with the other athletes would highly appreciate the continued support of BG Stadium and funding and our home field that we really are proud of having. So that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate you. Who else we got? Here we go. Hi, Beth.
Beth Whittenburg, seventeen thirty Lakeland Court. I'm the owner of Smoothie, of Smoothie King. So one of the ways I got Smoothie King to a little bitty town, El Dorado, Kansas, was BG Products Stadium. We use that as criteria to decide if we're going to have enough income to pay the bills and to provide good nutrition and options for people. So if you guys take this away, I'm going to lose a lot of income. And I really need that to stay there because that's what we were hoping to preference, some of that. There's a lot of sporting events. There's a lot of athletes that want Smoothie King. So I need that to stay here or your next small business is not going to do so well. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Ma'am, I got, I got a question. What makes you think that if the city is no longer a part of the EFABC, the stadium is not going to be there?
is not gonna be there?
I think as a group, we're collaboratively worried that, that we're not gonna be able to pay it and keep it open.
It's paid.
Okay, so we're not gonna keep the upkeep. We're not gonna draw the events that we need there. We're not gonna have the support there.
The city gives a very small amount based on our usage of the stadium, which we don't use. Now, when the stadium was built, the city gave three million dollars and the reason I know that is because I'm the one that made the motion. Three, we wrote a three million dollar check. And then we wrote another check for, I believe it was about a hundred and ten thousand dollars because we were asked to pay our maintenance fees upfront, which we did. And I'll be honest, I voted against that, but it passed, so. So I don't understand why you would think that if the city is no longer part of the EFABC, that the stadium isn't gonna be there.
Then I think that we need a better explanation because I don't think that we all understood that. We're worried that the BG Product Stadium is gonna go bye-bye and that we're gonna have to come up with other places to play and use.
See, and I don't know who you've been talking to or, but I mean, it's the first time you've been here, I think. So I don't, I don't know where you're getting your information.
We would love to have that conversation with the entire crowd so we understand.
Maybe it sounds like we need to start having our conversation here and then reopen it up for them.
Sure, that's, sounds great. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Who wants to talk?
Well, I'm, I'll start. So to Nick's point, the, the direct financial contribution over the last couple of years, outside of the, of the initial funding, has been, you know, a couple of thousand dollars a, a year. As, as some of my fellow commissioners have brought up in work sessions and other conversations in the past, the city also has a significant amount of investment each year in personnel costs. We, just like Butler Community College and just like USD four ninety, have our staff go down there and help get stuff done to try to keep costs low. So I would say that that, that has some, some value as well to, to, to the speaker's point, that, you know, if, if, if the city of El Dorado leaves this, this, this partnership, then that's a resource that's gonna also be leaving the partnership, which will make it more difficult for the EFABC or BG Product Stadium to, to continue to maintain. I appreciate the initial comments from Ray, from Mr. Caddell. And, and it's one of the things that I've said a few times in our conversations is that we, we're constantly looking as a city in ways that we can partner with businesses, partner with organizations and partner with our other taxing entities to make things better for the citizens of El Dorado. This was one of those kind of collaborative partnerships, the EFABC, that was formed with everybody at the table to, to kind of bring, finally bring this stadium to fruition and provide this resource for the high school, the college, for Little League football players in El Dorado. And hopefully at the time, we talked about being able to do community events there as well. Concerts, movies, movies at ninety, you know, movies, whatever at the stadium. Community events. There were some challenges early on with, with being able to have concerts there, some, some logistical challenges. We, there was a conversation about having to disperse the weight via plywood and where are we gonna store the plywood, just different things. We, we pointed out a lot of these concerns that the city had in a letter to the EFABC just to kind of make sure everyone's on the same page here. And the EFABC board responded to those concerns. Some of those things, and I don't have the letter.
I'm, I'm looking it up right now.
You know. Can I see that camera? Some of the things that, that we raised as a concern, just so everybody, um, everyone's on board, had to do with sustainable funding for operations, long-term maintenance, annual operation, replacement of turf, so forth. There was, there were really four points raised. The second point was hosting community, community events due to turf and track warranty concerns. The third one was cities not generating any revenue from events held, including Drums Across Kansas and the Shrine Bowl. And the fourth was a concern that the current fee schedule is prohibiting for community use outside of our school district and our fellow district. The EFABC then responded to that, to those concerns that the city presented with a pretty detailed letter, a pretty detailed response. When we talked about the, when, when the concern was raised about lack of sustainable funding, we talked about things like the, the kind of renewal for the, for the skyboxes. We've got some sponsorship renewals. These things, as they described in their letter, should be, you know, at this point, should be able to cover those, those long-term maintenance costs and those, those renewals. So, and they also kind of gave us a, a schedule of what it's gonna look like, that the administrators, David, Dr. Kroll at the college and Superintendent Tosh with four ninety would be working together throughout the schedule to, to facilitate these things. And each of the entities, the city commission, the college and the school district would continue to get, get updates for that. The inability to host community events, you know, they kind of addressed that. We used to have a, an event person on staff, worked on a couple of things there. We didn't really, weren't able to bring some of those opportunities to fruition for whatever reason. But one of the things that they mentioned in the, in the response was, as we do, as, as David and Dr. Kroll and Teresa go out for bids for turf and track, for example, that they would be looking at maybe an opportunity to change the warranty agreement or reinforce the turf and tracks so that we could host some community concerts there and some other events. Lack of revenue generation, you know, we use the same, it was, it was great as I read that because it reminded me of years ago when I sat down in Linda Jolly's office and asked her questions about youth sporting events coming to El Dorado. I was a softball coach, you know, what, we, we had MAYB basketball. When these events come to town, how's revenue generated, right? So no one's writing a check directly to the city. The city doesn't make the money on that. But the actual economic impact of these events coming to town, eating at restaurants, which allows those restaurants to employ, can keep people employed, shopping at our stores, sometimes maybe staying overnight in, in hotels. I mean, when Circle comes here to play El Dorado at the, at the stadium, I'm pretty sure that, that the parents go home after the game. But, you know, there's, there's, all, those are all areas that generate revenue for the, or have an economic impact on our community as a whole. And so they presented some good numbers in there, some numbers that, that I understand because we deal with that at the college when I, as well. And we've, like I said, I had some exposure to that early on in my public service career with Linda when we were talking about trying to bring some other sporting events to town. The final concern was the prohibited fee schedule. We've, as, not just the, the city commission, but I think that the EFABC board as a whole has asked the administrators, so again, David, Dr. Kroll and Teresa, to, to revisit that and try to find ways that we can make the stadium more accessible to people within the community if they need to rent it for an event. But the reality is, we have to pay for that, right? Just like if you rent the Civic Center or if you rent the Activity Center for, for an event, someone's gotta maintain that. We've gotta pay the water bills. We've gotta pay our insurance in case we have water lines break. There's expense that, that's included in that. And so, so I think that the three administrators are gonna get back together or have been working together to, to kind of re, revisit that fee schedule and try and find some ways to make it more, more attainable for, for some of our, some of our citizens. Additionally, each entity has the opportunity to sponsor, to sponsor an event. So if, if Pastor Crook wanted to have an event there at the stadium, he could go to the entities and say, I'd like to host an event there. I understand this is gonna be the cost. I'd like for you as an entity to help sponsor that so that I don't have to eat all the cost. And then each individual entity will respond to that, to that request and then, then they contribute the additional funds. So that's kind of the, the timeline that got us to where we're at today. And then tonight's conversation is just a discussion really amongst the commission and, and obviously with all of you to try to kind of understand the impact. For me, it's to understand the impact that the stadium has had on the community and on our taxpayers, all of you, whether you're a school, you know, a student here. If, if you're a student in El Dorado, then there's a pretty good chance that you and your family are taxpayers in El Dorado. And the rest of you that are here visiting, it's important to me to understand what your view is on this. Because as, as Nick mentioned earlier, you know, our financial, direct financial contribution every year is pretty minimal. But I think the partnership holds an enormous amount of value above and beyond that two thousand dollar contribution that we make each year. Additionally, back to what I said in the beginning, we have resources at the city that we've been able to bring to the table to make things happen at the stadium, just like Butler Community Colleges, college has resources that they bring to the table and just like USD four ninety has resources that they bring to the table. And I think that's what makes this a really well-rounded partnership in that the primary users today are four ninety and, and BCC. I mean, they use it the most, right? I would expect that because, because my colleagues have pointed out numerous times and I agree with, like, you know, we don't have a city of El Dorado, you know, arena football team or NFL team here, right? We don't use it for that. We don't have a city soccer team. Now, we have opportunities for our, for our junior Wildcat football players to play there. We have opportunities, if we wanted to use it, for our rec league soccer teams to play there. I mean, we could use that field. But today we don't, you know, the bulk of the use is from, from Butler Community College and USD four ninety. And they contribute a significant amount more each year financially than we do. So I just wanted to kind of summarize that from my perspective for the group that's here tonight. That's where, that, that was the nexus that got us here. We sent a letter with some concerns. The letter was answered and then we're here tonight for discussion. So I just wanted to kind of summarize that.
I make the comment.
Yeah, Dave, sure.
I'll just, I'll just ditto the, ditto the mayor. It'll take less time. But I do want to thank the two seniors at EHS for getting up and speaking. I'm sure it's rather a daunting task with all these people and four, five of us up here to get up and talk to us. So I appreciate that very much that you did that. And be assured, Dr. Beth, you'll still have my cats.
But are you gonna buy a smoothie? I mean, this is, we're talking about Smoothie King now, right? Matt, Rick, Nick, you guys have?
Well, I'll admit, I was the one that brought this up. Again, like I said, eight, nine years ago, whenever we did this, I thought the city stepped up and we wrote a check. And I'm, I'm glad we did. I mean, like I said, I was, I was in favor of the stadium. But it was presented at the time that there would be community movies shown there and there would be concerts shown, or concerts there. And to the best of my knowledge, there haven't, there hasn't been. So I don't understand or I don't see why now we're talking about doing it when we haven't done it in the last eight, nine years. When we do have staff go out there and work, it takes them off task. And we, we have specific things that we have to do. We have to do police and fire protection and we have to provide water and sewer and we have to have streets that we can, that we can drive on safely. Those are things that people expect for the taxes we pay or they pay. All of us pay. The stadium was a bonus. And I think once it's built, which it is now, I thought that was a really good thing for us to do to help four ninety and, and the Juco. Cause we never, we don't have a football team or a track team or a soccer team. So now we're talking about, now we're, they're talking about new turf and new track and I mean, we didn't wear it out. But if this fundraising doesn't come to realization, we're gonna be asked to pay for a third of it. And we've done real well getting our reserves back up and where they need to be and handling our lake debt and, I mean, we have, you know, we have responsibilities to thirteen thousand people, not just the folks that go to ballgames and track meets and soccer matches.
And I think I want to reiterate a little bit of what, I'm, I'm, both sides have, like, both sides make sense. I think the other history piece that, that what you guys might not know is that that three million dollars, we took out of our, our account that we were paying for the water to bank, because we own the water at the lake. We haven't paid that debt yet. And for thirty years, we were taking money and putting it in a savings account and trying to get interest on it so we could pay, right now, what, fifty-three million dollars that we owe on, on the, we, we, Tabitha, is it fifty-three or forty-seven?
Forty-seven.
Forty, forty-seven million dollars that we still owe on the construction of the lake. That's our portion of it. Two years ago, we, we figured out, well, staff did, that we could pay off forty-nine percent of our debts that with the money that we already had. So we took that money and we paid it all off and we forgave. And once, basically what they tried to do was borrow three million dollars from that fund. They were gonna pay it back hoping for interest and whatnot. Well, that, we forgave that debt. And I think that's, that's a big piece to this is that for three years, we've been dealing with that loan that we made. And I don't think anybody on this board feels like that it was a bad investment on the city's part. And, and, and I, Nick is, you know, Nick is trying to look forward and Nick has been from day one. I mean, he's the only one of the five of us that was been part of this since it was built.
I was here.
Okay. Kind of. Oh, but I, it's, with, with that, it's, it, there's that whole other piece of that we've been dealing with at the same time of the, the financial part of it. So I just wanted to throw that out there, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, appreciate that.
It's the perception. This is what these people believe, that if the city gets out of it, it's gonna fail. This is why they're all here. Now, if the city chooses not to be a part of this, what's gonna keep our economic development going too? Cause their perception, that's what we're getting is perception. I didn't really realize it until they started talking, because I was wondering why they were talking the way they were. But they think we all need to be partners together. And there's a few other things in this community that we need to partner with too. And so I believe the partnership needs to stay. That's where I'm at.
Thank you, Greg. So to that point, I was, you know, I was, I was on the commission and I did take a little hiatus between being a commissioner and then coming back as mayor. So I haven't been here the whole time then you have and I appreciate that. You know, Nick's right, we didn't ever have the concerts out there that we wanted to have. We had a, a person at, that worked for the CBB at the city that, who was trying to organize that. And then we've gone a long period of this, nine or ten years, nine years, with that position not being filled or being, not being focused on trying to do that. with that position not being filled or being, not being focused on trying to do that. So to ask the question, why are we talking about concerts now? It's because we're advertising for, to bring that position back. And it's something that will be filling that person's, potentially filling that person's role to do. We are responsible for 13,000 people and everything, every decision that we make up here has some sort of impact on 13,000 people. We have parks in town that we have, we spend money on every year. It's an amenity. It's a, it's a quality of life piece that we provide for our community. The difference is if we have, if we have a, at our spray park, if we've got a pump that bursts down there and we've got to go out and spend 20 or $30,000 to fix that, we don't have partners to help defray that cost. This, that's what this partnership does. It gives an opportunity for us to, to be involved with, with our partners, our taxing entities in this community to, to be able to bring something nice to El Dorado. We made a big decision 10 years ago to, to spend $3 million of the city's money to fund this, of the taxpayers' money to fund this. And I think that from my perspective, as we continue to move forward and we recognize that while there may be some challenges or concerns, I would rather us be part of the solution than to walk away. You know, we, we talk all the time about where we spend our money. This is something that sits inside the city limits of El Dorado. It's something that gets used, something that all of us would like for it to get used more. Especially after the last year we've had with COVID, when it's set kind of dormant in, in a lot of times that we, that it shouldn't have been. So we have an opportunity now as a group, as a commission, as the Butler Community College and 490 and as the EFABC to, to, I think, to come together and try and bring as much as we can to the stadium, which brings things to El Dorado, to the community. You know, we just, we just asked David at the work session last week to go ahead and issue the RFP for, you know, a study of what kind of improvements we can do with the lake. Which is going to impact a select group of people that go to the lake and utilize those pieces. That's what we do. There's never going to be a time that we make a decision that will directly, other than financially, that will directly enhance the life of all 13,000 people. When we fix Taylor Street, all 13,000 people aren't going to drive down Taylor Street. We do pieces so that it impacts each person and it impacts groups within this community, in my opinion. So I just, my decision, my vote, for lack of better terms, is to continue with the partnership and work with the, within the FABC, instruct our city manager to work with the administrators to, to, I mean, get this, get this sucker hopping. We, look, we got to get past the COVID piece and the pandemic and we, I'd love to see that thing packed as often as possible. I love going to the football games out there. I love going to the soccer games and I'm super excited to maybe see you play at Butler. But these are the things that we have around here that we've got to embrace those quality of life amenities that we have because that is what is going to attract people to town, quality of life. And that quality of life piece goes from the stadium to our parks, to our recreation events, to our downtown, to the things that we have at the lake, because that's what makes our community. So that's where I'm going to fall on this. So this is an item for discussion tonight. I would, I guess, welcome additional comments. You all know where, what the details are now a little better. And kind of where, what our concerns and our discussion points would be. If there's additional comments, I think that we can take those. And if not, I think that we would probably move on from this discussion to the next agenda item. With, with, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Real quick, my name's Eddie Simmons. I live on 427 Simpson. I didn't come here for the PG comment, but what you just said is why I moved here four years ago. I love the lake. I like to see something where these young people can go. We got to remember, if we don't help the young people out, they're going to be filling our jail up out here. If they ain't got no where to go play or nothing, they're going to get in trouble. I got an 11-year-old son. I'm raising him. And he ain't got an arcade to go to. He ain't got nothing except the play place at McDonald's. You know, so we got to remember our young people. We're all going to die and go to heaven, hopefully. But the young people is going to be our next generation. So the quality of life, what you said is why I moved here.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So as a discussion item, without, without another motion or anything, it's just we can move on to the next, next item. We don't have to take a motion to stay in the agreement. But if, if there's nothing further, then I think we can move on to the next agenda item?
Yeah, I think so.
You guys cool with that?
Yeah.
I truly appreciate you all coming out tonight. It's great to see the kind of support that we have for our youth and our athletes and our facilities in this town. So thank you all. So we're going to take just a minute here while the room clears out for those that are leaving. Okay, so item, agenda item number 11, paving of Hutton Road and Simpson Road, the public hearing. We have a project in front of us to pave Hutton and Simpson and at this time I'm going to open the public hearing for comment. So we will, just so everyone knows, the public hearing will be handled just like public comment. You're welcome to come up, give us your name and address and you've got, you know, three minutes to tell us what you think. So this is the public hearing for Hutton Road and Simpson Road.
I'll go first.
Come on in.
Eddie Simmons, 427 Simpson Road. And the road that's been done in that neighborhood, great job to the contractor. The letters that I got, I just got a few questions. The letters that I got already had numbers. Are those estimated numbers from the work been done on the other roads in the area? Because I think one of them had $15,000 on it. I didn't bring the letters with me, but is that where we got them numbers? They're just estimated numbers from the last contractor?
It's, it's estimated numbers by an engineering department of what the project, they, they had estimated.
What paving is going to cost?
Right, right. That's the estimate. And when the, if the project is done and when it's completed, the final numbers are.
Okay, it will go out to one bid, three bids, or how's that done within the city?
Most of the time we get three to four bids.
I've worked for Johnson County.
Yeah, yeah. It goes out multiple times. Most of the times we get three to four bids per project.
Okay. Uh, street lights, or is that being considered? It's awful dark in the neighborhood.
It is dark out there and that's a.
We, we'll take a look at that. And that's something we can work with ever beyond. Additional street lights need to be placed. You know, our policy is, you know, intersections for traffic safety issues, not so much for lighting up the neighborhood. But if there's a concern, we can work with the neighborhood and maybe some private lights could be put in or, but something could be considered.
Okay, as long as, as long as we're considering some lighting, because it, like I say, it's really dark in the.
And part of this project will go and meet individually, if approved, with each homeowner at their home and concerns like that can be brought up.
Okay, now, when we do this project, I think it's Fifth Street that's behind the school, Circle Hill Elementary. And then Simpson. And I live on Simpson and one of my neighbors came today. Where do we park during this project? I'm a Vietnam veteran, handicapped.
Yes, sir.
On a fixed income and 100 yards is a long ways for me to go sometimes.
What we will do is, is make our best effort every evening by 5:00 PM or around that time that you can get back into your driveway and park in your driveway. There will be that period of time when the curb and gutter is laid and your driveway is poured, that there will be a cure period that we need to do. If, we have to make special combinations, we can split driveways into two different pores to continue access to the home. We've been pretty successful. Douglas Road just wrapped up. We were able to keep those folks in their homes. It was a pretty substantial, large-scale project, except for a few here, here and there's.
So what I'm hearing is we're just going to drive right down through the construction to get to our homes?
There'll be barricades and as the road is torn out and graded, right behind it will be, you know, the aggregate added so that it can stay passable as best we can throughout the project.
But, but my question was, we're going to drive right through the construction zone? I take my son to school every morning and then I go pick him up every evening. And before the five o'clock whistle blows, do I drive right through the construction?
Yes.
And the guys are going, whoever gets the bid is going to know that.
Yeah, we have special provisions within our specifications that talk about this sort of thing.
Okay, thank you very much. I've noticed since, I've just moved here four years ago, but I told you why I moved here. I like the city of El Dorado. My wife liked it. She passed the cancer two years ago, but she was one of the main reasons why we moved here, was the quality of life to raise our son. I've noticed, because I have another home in another community in El Dorado, when we put roads in, we don't put no sidewalks in. Is everybody just got older teenagers that know to look both ways? And then look back to the left? Or is everybody got little kids like I've got? None of the roads got sidewalks, except for our main, except for our main ones. Is any sidewalk being considered down the road past these projects? I know that you probably ain't considering it now because none of the roads you did over there at this time has sidewalks. But are we considering any sidewalks in any of our neighborhoods in the future?
At this point, we are not. The commission did receive a letter from Circle School Districts. I think they mentioned that.
Yeah, Circle.
Yeah, that school is right there by me. You ought to see all the, there's a lot of kids in our neighborhood there. I didn't really realize that till I moved there. But you see them coming, they walk right down the middle of the road because that's where they walk.
Yeah, I, I would say this. I, I agree that sidewalks are a concern of mine. I live, it's where you live, Eddie, and and there's no sidewalks out there and I raised my daughter, you know, although, and so it's, it is tough. You know, I think coming back in and retroactively talking about sidewalks or trying to figure out how to make sidewalks happen. It's something that we've kicked around at the commission level before, is something that neighborhoods, if, if an entire neighborhood wants to be involved in that project or that process, we've always been more than willing and able to come to the table. And we've gone in when neighborhoods have kind of requested us to come help them with that. We've gone in and, and again, retroactively put sidewalks in where we could.
Well, I would like to see these projects get moved forward. Anything that improves the quality of your life in your neighborhood, I don't know how everybody else feels about it. But if it's going to increase my taxes because of the bond money and it gets paid back in so many years and then it drops off my taxes, but it improved my neighborhood? Because I don't know if anybody's drove down Simpson, but you might want to be living east or west of town.
Yes, sir.
But the city has, you know, tried to get it patched and stuff when somebody calls and stuff. You guys got a real good man in Brad that works for you.
Yep.
And if I call him and talk to him, he says, Eddie, we're planning on repatching or whatever. So that's my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for answering my, all my questions.
Anybody else on this? Okay.
Jim Miller, 345 Simpson Road. Couple of years ago, our neighbor on the corner north of us on Third Street, his house is built up high. There's a lot of field there and he had some yard. People come in and they did a lot of redistributing the dirt that was in his yard. And they plugged off your drains for all of the the drains, underneath the drains, the ditch. And one of your men was out there one day and I dumped a load of fill in the Phillips, they end the, next to Third Street. And I told him, I says, well, you got it. Why are you doing that? You got a drain right over there. Well, Kings don't have a driveway. I said, yes, they do. It's right over here. I poked my shovel in the dirt over there and got it. And it was supposed to get cleaned out, but it never did. I was told that Brad would be out there with the crew and wash them out. But that never happened. And in that block, there are no alley entrances. Why? On Third Street?
A true alley does not exist. It is all private property.
No. Your own.
There's a utility easement there. Ownership of the property that underlies the utility easement is, you know, the individual that owns that property. There is not a public rideaway or a, you know, land that the city owns to, to, to open that up.
How come the block east of there, it, you have alley entrances?
That was a request at the time when I believe Third Avenue was paved by the individuals long there. They brought that commission to asset access, be granted, understanding that it wasn't a true public rideaway.
But the, the poles for the High Line goes right down the middle of the easement behind us.
Probably, yeah.
They informed us that, the county people informed us that we couldn't have anything without land. It was an alley.
Now, when Township Village was platted in the 50s. Yeah, you, you were probably one of the original builders out there. Some, they functioned almost as an alley, but it wasn't a true platted alley. It was an easement, a utility easement.
Not very consistent with the rest of town. The, there's a heck of a dip right at the south side of Third Street that would match any of these speed bumps down, downtown here. And then you head up that, over that big hump that where that guy was dumping that load of dirt, I was talking to you about a minute ago. And he was dumping it and shoving it over and it was shoved over and covered up the, the two for King's property, which is the second property south of Third. And, but it won't drain because on down below there, there's, well, you, you need to see it. And I've tried to get people out there to see it, but it don't work. The, uh, water won't drain uphill. You've got a curb comes up that steep incline and your curb is about that high and the water won't go across it. And it won't come down. Uh, when they redid the neighbor's yard and redistributed the dirt, they did put a lot of his field dirt from up around the house down where the drain ditches have been. And it, there is no drain ditch there really. But what are you going to do about the oil wells there on Hutton Hunt? I got one right in front of my house.
Yeah, they'll just stay in place. The folks won't.
They'll be filled.
An abandoned well, or?
It's sunk at least three, I've filled it in at least three, four times last year.
Well, if we, if we come across something like that, there's a, there's a procedures and methods to plug those appropriately?
The corporation commission will make sure it gets filled. And I know a bunch of them.
Have you talked to them about the well in your yard, or?
No, I've talked to some of your people and they have come out and filled it a time or two. And I've filled it at least three times myself. And there's one at the south end of the street too, on Second Street.
There's a procedure they're supposed to follow for a proper plug. There's a procedure they're supposed to follow for a proper plug.
I know, I used to run a rig.
Yeah. I used to work on a rig.
I ran a rig for five years before, Skelly hired me and moved me up here.
The same with the water well, there's a procedure, you gotta follow to plug a water well too.
Well, you gotta put fifteen foot cement in the bottom of them, and then so much rock and then cement to top. You don't, you don't just fill them in with mud, like we have been doing. Can I be assured that the corporation commission will be appraised to this situation?
Yeah, I can call them on your behalf and you can grant them access to your property.
It's right in the middle of the street. I used to have to drive right around it to get to my house. I've built four houses in that very neighborhood.
Yeah, for sure.
Had to drive around it to get to the first one.
We visit with those individuals and work with them quite regularly, so.
Good. I'm sure they, they will be cooperative when they hear this situation.
We'll let you finish up here, Jim.
And can that big hump been ta- be taken down that was put in there to? I, somebody had some extra dirt or something, aggregate, I don't know what it was. It filled in right on the north end of three hundred block of Hunter. And literally covered up King's outlet to their tube. And of course, the yard cleanings for the house on the corner. And that house on the corner is not. There, it sits with the property line on the easement in the back. So if anybody tries to get down there, they're gonna run across a pole about three foot in.
Yeah, we need to address that.
Our streets have been kept in pretty good condition. The street down by the school, I can understand why they, they cry and go on fix it themselves. It comes out of their money. And they have to come back to us to holler for more state money to fix it. The street on North End of Hunter is terrible. I seldom use it. But it's just because of the parents' traffic and the city won't do it, I mean, this city. The school will not repair it. The four ninety, I think, did their own streets. Our street out there is, we're in a different district and a different time. Can you get Brad out there to, you promised me once to get him out there and blow them tubes out? But he never did.
Yeah, I think we can send Public Works out there and meet with you, Jim, and have him take a look at what you're topping out with the coal works.
Well, I've threatened to clean them out myself with the shovel as much as I could from the end, but I can't get through the middle of it.
Sure.
He's got a flusher, he can blow them right on out. If he's got somewhere to blow them to.
Yes, David, you guys can get, Jim, I'll make, we'll make sure that David, that Scott and David and Brad get that addressed. Thank you.
My name is Michael, I work at, or I live at six forty Hunter. Eric, E-H-R-E-T. I don't have a whole lot to say, just two things I wanted to bring up. The stop sign, I'm not a fan of that stop sign right there on Third Street when you're going down Hunter. I understand the one on going east and west is definitely beneficial, but it's, it's almost kind of weird that that's the only road in the north-south streets that are parallel has that stop sign. Hunter's like the only one, I guess. So, I don't, I live on Hunter, I like driving both directions and that stop sign is a small inconvenience.
Are you talking about the one on Fifth?
Yes, yeah, the one going north and south on Fifth. Or, I'm sorry, on Hunter.
At Fifth?
At Fifth.
Okay.
Yeah. If we're gonna redo the road, I would just put my opinion out there, I think it would be cool that was just a pass, maybe a yield at the very least. But the east and west is obviously something that needs to be a stop sign, cause it's a dead end. And then the easement on the end of the block on Sixth Street, it's got a concrete grate there. And the lady across the alley from me has got a garage in the back that she accesses. And that grate has barbed wire, or not barbed wire, rebar sticking up through, potentially to puncture a tire. And she and I use that easement to get to our backyards for very sharp work.
Off of Sixth?
Off of Sixth. Yeah, it's a really long drive if you go off of Third.
Sure.
So we use the Sixth Street side and it's just hazardous on your tires.
And it's sitting in the easement, you said?
Yeah, like as soon as you pull in the easement, there's this like square kind of at an angle that it's like a drainage grate or something. And it's got, it's chipped and broken, and it's got barbed wire sticking up, or rebar.
In the easement?
In the easement, yeah, it's off of Sixth.
I, I'm unaware of the rebar, but I know what structure he's talking about, so.
Okay, you guys take a look at it. It's on his list.
Okay, yeah, those are the only two things I just wanted to bring up.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sharon Fox at three three seven Simpson Road, I guess number fifty-two. When we were annexed, I think it was in two thousand and eight, we received a very nice letter from the mayor, which was a number of mayors and a number of councils ago, saying we've annexed you, we're gonna improve your lighting, we're gonna up your water pressure, we're gonna improve your streets. At the time, I didn't believe it. So I went around and I took an area equal in size and in pretty much population, made sure that they included the school and a number of square blocks. One was up around Grand View, one was around Oil Hill, one was down around the old skeleton. At the time, we were forty percent of the lighting comparable to the other school district, to the other two areas. Since then, they've changed three bulbs, and that's pretty much it as far as lighting. My water pressure's gone from thirty-five pounds to thirty-three. And we're just now getting around to the state, to the streets. And this was in two thousand and eight, I believe, when it started. We were told two years ago that the construction is gonna be done in twenty-one. Now it's twenty-two. So that's pretty much where we're at. I do have a couple of questions for the, one, how long are the specials for?
They're proposed for twenty years.
Twenty years, tough specials. When do you plan on starting?
So, construction in twenty twenty-two, it's likely that assessments would be spread in early twenty twenty-three, which then in that December of twenty twenty-three tax bill, you would see your first special payment.
And the construction will start when?
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. We will, we'll see utility things happening this fall. The actual road construction twenty twenty-two.
And I have one other question. Adjacent to Oil Hill School on Hunter, they, there's a number of the teachers who evidently don't like to use the parking lot, like to park along the side, and it's a pretty narrow road. Would it be possible to work with the school district and see if they could, on that part, make an adjacent parking lots if those teachers could park there? We can, plus it's an easy pickup for the kindergartners. So, because that's where they come out. So if you could work with them, at the same time they're doing Hunter, if they could move over and have the Circle District put in a parking lot.
We could bring that up to them, yeah. Just, just curious about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Reed Campbell, I live at four twenty-eight Simpson. And I bought that house on Simpson three and a half years ago. And at that time, there was a petition that was brought around in two thousand and fourteen that said for five years, there could not be any pavement done. And I understood that. So in the summer of two thousand and nineteen, I went around and got a petition for Simpson Street, cause that's where I live. I didn't think I needed to go up Hunter. And I got a petition and everybody that signed it, with the exception of two people, said they wanted it paved. I took that to the city and they accepted it. And I was told that the city plan at that time was that this construction would happen in two thousand and twenty-one. I was told about three or four months ago, when I was in the committee meeting for something else, that the city plan was still in place. When did you switch to twenty twenty-two? Did twenty twenty cancel everything for a whole nother year?
No, and maybe it's us not being as clear, but authorizing beginning the improvements, you know, twenty twenty-one was in our CIP and the way we forecast things. So some projects take a lot of development and time to get going after bid. So we just want to be conservative and say, anticipate twenty twenty-two, the spring, the roadwork would begin.
In my opinion, that's unacceptable. I understand projections, I understand forecasting, I understand planning. But so we thought that before twenty twenty hit, and guess what, everything changed, didn't it? You guys changed the other way around, and I don't appreciate it, and I'm objecting. I was told by another person who serves on the school board of Circle that, well, there are people that live in those lots and pay taxes for twenty years. But you didn't maintain the roads. They went the country road, in the city of El Dorado. I've lived in El Dorado for twenty years. I've only lived here for coming up to four. The kids from Circle School come up and down my road all the time, no problem. But the road, the Hunter Fifth, is an embarrassment to your city, my city. I don't care about the school district numbers, it has nothing to do with it. I know that was a debate a long time ago, I don't wanna even get into that. People come up and say, gee, why is that, why around that nice elementary school is it so crappy? And my response to them is, we're gonna get it fixed next year. That was what I told them a year ago. I implore you, stick to the original city plan. I thought I'd come here and find out that, well, you're having this meeting, cause you have to get opinions. Then you're gonna have the next meeting to take the bids, then the next meeting to accept the bids. So construction would start, I don't know, July, August? Why not? I came to you three years ago, or two years ago when you were at Martinton saying, all you gotta do is move the machinery over, that'd be more cost efficient, wouldn't it? No, now we're two years into more expensive. If you want to do it bad enough, you can. I think you should. And I'm sorry that twenty twenty didn't turn out very good for all of you. Didn't turn out very good for me at all either. I got my first shot Tuesday. I'm not sixty-five yet. I haven't worked since last March. One year, I'm not supposed to be retired yet. My plans changed. I want you to not change your plans. Let's take to twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
My name's Lilita Perry, I live at five twelve Hunter Road. And I just wanted to say, the gentleman asked about the stop sign on Fifth and Hunter. I, we came to the city commission to do something about when people left Sixth Street to Third Street, some way to slow them down, because they go down through there, and they still do it now. They run the stop sign. My grandchildren are not that small now, but there are children in the neighborhood and there's kids at school. And that's why that stop sign was put there, to slow people down. And the only thing that slows them down is Third Street with a dip in the street and the stop sign. That way, they don't go clear to Second Street to get to Sutherland. And that's the reason that was put in there. And what he, the other one was saying something about the cars parked on Hunter Road up at a school, that's when parents pick up their kids. And I had, I hadn't come to the city commission, but I think that there should be a, something there that they can only park on one side of the street. Because when they let school out, there are so many cars, you can't hardly get in between. Plus you have little kids running across the street. And you're scared you're gonna, we don't even go down there when they let out of school, because afraid we'll hit a kid. And that's, that's what I think he's talking about with the not being able to get through. I don't know whether it's so much the teachers as it is parents picking up kids, cause they come down Hunter and they go into the school. And then when it gets lined up in there, then they can't, so they're out on the streets. But it is kind of dangerous for young children. And that's, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, I live at five well, Hunter Road. And I wanna know if I'm gonna have to pay for Fifth Street, I had to have to pay for Third Street. Can you tell me that?
Jack, did you get a letter on, on Fifth? Did you guys just get the one on Hunter?
No, we got the letter that said you were gonna pay Simpson, Hunter, Fifth and Second.
Did you pay for Third, do you remember?
No, because the way they did it, yes, we paid for Third Street.
Okay. Okay.
Because on our side of the street, it went up, I don't know how, if it up, it went up one more house, because Fifth Street comes to Huntington, and it doesn't go through on through, so that's why we paid for-
You only paid for two.
You're gonna pay for two streets.
You guys, you guys are on the east side of Huntington, right?
Yes.
Okay. So you would've either paid for Sixth Avenue or Third Avenue?
We paid for Third.
Right.
Third, okay.
But we, we were in the understanding that we don't pay for Fifth Street, because-
Yep.
The house, uh, one, two, three houses on the, uh, west side of Huntington Road, they didn't pay for Third Street. So what our understanding was, that they would pay for Fifth Street.
Right. So on, on Huntington, the way, the way it works out is, the, the individuals with properties on the west are gonna, have either participated in Third Avenue or will participate potentially in Fifth and Second.
You're not gonna, you're paying, paving Simpson and Huntington, but you're not gonna pay Fifth Street. Is that right, right?
That's the next item.
Fifth Street's in a second, second project. It, it's, it's a separate project.
It'll be a separate-
You'll, you'll pay for two streets, so if you paid for Third-
But I was just wondering if they were gonna, you were gonna go ahead at the same time and do Second and, uh, Fifth Street?
Well, that's, we're gonna, I hope so. That's what we're gonna discuss tonight. It's a separate project in a separate hearing, but-
That's probably a good idea, so you'll have someplace to park if you have.
I agree.
Okay, that's cool.
Yeah, a lot of these folks are not affected with both.
Right, right, absolutely.
One thing to say is not about the payment, but I was born and raised here-
Jack, can you mind so they can hear you at home?
Just stand here.
Well, so they can hear you at home.
Yeah.
Oh, and, uh, when I moved out there, about fifty years ago, I had, uh, about twenty psi water pressure. And now I have at least sixty in the sprinkler system. And I wanna commend the city for boosting the pressure out of this village.
Yeah, because before, our water pressure, you, if you run the garden hose-
You can do it like this.
But now, yeah, yeah. So the water pressure is, is good.
And we've got kid services, trash, everything. I can't complain about anything. I'm way down here to sit, but I'm gonna have to pay for Fifth.
Shouldn't have to, yeah.
But we have a, uh, well, we're gonna fix the road, and I know it's gonna take a while, but it's like a pond out on Huntington Road from Third Street to Fifth Street. It's a pond.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
That's one of the reasons we're doing this.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
I'm Dana Jordan, four-twenty-five Huntington Road. Um, I also own five-oh-eight Huntington Road, which is right next door. I have two lots on my own, and then I have the additional third lot. I'm in the middle of the block. I was not gonna speak, but there's a couple of things I need, I think I need to say. I had called the engineering department, and the guy offered to come out, because I asked him, I'd, I'd already paid for Third Street. Now I'm gonna be charged for Huntington and Fifth on all three of my lots. So I asked him on the phone twice, let me clarify. You only are required to pay for two roads, is that correct? Yes. He come out to my house, he brought the maps and everything, you know, very professional. I really appreciated him coming out. I asked him again, I said, before you even open anything up, I want you to tell me again. I'm only required to pay for two streets. Just because I've already paid off my portion on West Third, am I being punished for that? No. So why am I now being charged to pay for Huntington and Fifth Street, and my neighbors across the street only have to pay for Huntington? They said, well, because Fifth Street didn't go through, then they were gonna pay, they had to pay for, um, Sixth Street. And so he, he showed me how that was correct. So, I, again, I, I noticed that you, not to point any fingers, but you, I saw you do this, you have two streets. That is incorrect. I finally got him to admit that it has to do with how your property is, is, some areas are deeper, um, and they, they go off a proportion, because this would pay for more on Third Street versus what I would pay for the other ones. Now, tell me if I'm wrong, because that's exactly what he told me.
And it was me, yeah. I, I'm the one that went to your-
Oh, yeah, I loved it, I loved it.
With the big mask.
I loved his mask, yeah. So, and we did agree that two roads are not correct.
Right.
Because I said, don't be lying to people, because that is absolutely incorrect. I've been told that for several years.
As have I. I mean, I wasn't trying to lie, I wanna tell you that.
Okay.
I mean, I, I've been involved with the commission for ten years, and that's what they've always told me, so we're learning something new tonight.
That's what it's all about, it's all about education, yeah.
Appreciate that.
And he's the one that told me that, because I wasn't gonna speak. Um, the other thing is, is I've lived out there most of my life. My parents raised me on the corner of Fifth and Huntington. And I went to all those, I went to Circle, and you told me that there was a chance, because Circle had been paying for, they're paying for School Road, they had to pay for Boyer, now they're gonna have to pay for Huntington, and they're also gonna have to pay for Fifth. So there's a consideration that they may not, may or may not be interested in paying for Fifth Street. So, you know, that just makes it cheaper for me, because I'm gonna put out a lot of money for what I have to pay. A lot of money. I'm not saying that we don't need the roads, because it's ridiculous. I had to do, I had to put in a drainage ditch, because I went down to the engineering department several years ago to see when they were gonna do Huntington. Because my neighbors all sit higher than me, and they both had pools. And I've got water just running down, it ran into my shed, I've had flooding multiple times in my shed. So I had a guy come out, and he put in a drainage ditch for several thousand dollars to do that. When I was told, well, we'll put a, we're gonna put a drainage cap back there, so it won't be a problem. Well, how many, how many floors do I have to run in my two-car shed before that happens? So anyway, the other thing, the only thing I wanted to say too, was that some gentleman said something about, uh, he wants to get rid of the, of the, of the stop signs on, um, Huntington Road. I'm sorry, but I totally disagree. I've lived out there on that street the majority of my life, and the bigger the car, the faster they go. And they fly through there with those little kids. We've yelled at them, you know, I wanted to throw rocks at them. I wanted to put down something so that they can't get through there, and we're gonna wipe out a tire before they're going to hurt a kid. Uh, we did talk to somebody about having a PD officer sit there on Fifth Street and start writing tickets. Because that's how fast they go through there. Not only would it be a stop sign violation, it would also be, um, over twenty miles an hour. Because I mean, all you see a lot of times is just dust. They fly through there. So I know that's not a part of this, but that's my opinion after living there majority of my life. Okay? Because you knew my parents. Okay? All right.
Scott?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Can you do what we did on Post Road there on Huntington for her? And see, and-
I'd say after, after the project gets wrapped up.
After the improvement. Do, do a traffic study of that area, just to, because we, we had, we had the same concerns on Post Road, we did a traffic study to kinda see what the average speed was and whatnot. Uh, and so we have that technology. Um, I'd be interested after the project's done to see what, to see what.
That, that would be great, because there's, some kids are gonna get hurt or killed.
Perfect. Thank you, and thank you for letting us know.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I'm gonna ask about that as soon as we're, as soon as we're done with public comment for this.
Mayor Commissioner's Kevin Wisher, three forty-two Simpson. Just wanted to come by and, uh, voice my support for this project moving forward. This project is going to be expensive for all of us in the neighborhood, but it's ground overdue, and it's not gonna get any cheaper. So I'd rather jump in now and move this thing forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Any additional comments for the public hearing?
Mayor out of asks to read a statement.
Okay, oh yeah, go ahead.
This is from Roger and Kathy Storm, five-twenty Huntington Road. We wanna thank the city in advance for paving Huntington Road. The street needs major repairs, and it'll be very nice to have curbs and gutters when it rains. We are a hundred percent for the project to be completed. To anyone that may be against the project due to costs, please be informed that this will eventually be done, and the cost will only continue to increase.
Thank you, Scott. If there's no other public, kind of, public comment for the hearing, we're gonna close the hearing. There's some discussion up here, questions? I, I've got a ques, I'm just gonna ask it. Two, two, two streets. Uh, Scott, I mean, you know, so for as long as I've been in the planning commission and the city commission, that's, you guys have always told us everyone pays for two streets. So help me understand how Dana's property is paying for multiple streets.
So, portions of our property are paying for two streets, no more than two. When, when the improvement district lines are created, um, to make it equitable, we split the block, so go halfway. Um, so Ms. Jordan owns lot thirty-two here and lot thirty-three. Um, thirty-three would participate in Huntington and Fifth. This little portion here of the northern part of lot thirty-two is participating in Fifth Avenue and Huntington. And the remaining south here, which is out of the improvement district for Fifth, uh, has already paid for Third Avenue and will pay for Huntington.
So lot thirty-three is not paid for Third?
Correct.
A portion, well, three-quarters of Third or Two-
Thirty-two has paid for Third.
Has paid. So, okay, so the, the, the challenge here then is that, is that, is that this lot, and as we look at this map, those four lots along the bottom have kinda been split in half, so.
Right, and, and, and that, we do that to not create more property on a project than another project, um, if that makes sense. The, the more square footage you have in the project, the cheaper it gets per square foot. So if, on Fifth, if we would've had an improvement district line come clear down here and around, Fifth would've had a potential bigger benefit, because they would have more area in the improvement district versus Third Avenue. So we have just split those over the years.
So what we tell everybody then is that every property pays for two roads-ish?
The, 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 the perfect example is, is Circle School District, so Oil Hill School. Here's a map that you guys have seen before, when we talked about this, you know, prior to the new year, uh, how these lines are created. Like, purple was a Sixth Avenue Improvement District, um, green was School Road. So this portion would've paid for school and Six, this portion Huntington and Six, this portion Fifth and Huntington. So no portion of the property pays for more than two, it's just, it's split up like that.
But it's split proportionally as well. So if you're splitting a property in half, and they're only paying half the cost, the half of the assessed rate that the property, the same size would pay if it were completely in the benefit district. So go back up. So you've got ten thousand six hundred and forty dollars for lot thirty.
That's a square footage.
What, okay, okay. I thought it was a dollar. Man, I need to put my glasses on. It just proves there's always an exception to the rule, right?
So, so you'll see like thirty-two, thirty-two out of five thousand three hundred and twenty square foot, five thousand three hundred and twenty, fifty-six hundred. These are the full lots, so ten thousand six-
Okay, so they're gonna be paying, okay, that's, I'm sorry, they're gonna be, they're gonna be paying their assessment on the five thousand square feet as opposed to the ten thousand square feet.
Correct, correct.
Okay. But when, when Scott came out to visit you, he was able to explain it, and you understood it, and I appreciate you helping me, uh, know that I need to ask that question, understand it, because like I said, for a long time, I've told people-
It was better to do it privately and not do all that in front of all these people.
Appreciate that.
Is there a way to move it up from Reed Copeland to two thousand twenty-one? And set Ninth Street back to two thousand twenty-two?
Well, like we talked about, Ninth is gonna have hurdles anyway because of the NSF. There's gonna be some lead-up. We've always done the traditional design, bid, build process here. There's other delivery methods, but all we end up usually doing is adding to the costs and, and, and change orders and things popping up. Really like the time that we did in going out and surveying and meeting what the individuals here needs. Um, um, working with consultants, going through the design process, making sure everything's right, getting utilities relocated. It, it's just been a good method for us in a number of these roads that we've done out there. We can make every effort to go as fast as we can and, and, and get it done, not be a little area of changing, like, like, design build or, or something like that, doing something of that nature, on this the fast track.
Appreciate that. Kendra, questions, comments? Nick?
No.
Matt?
No, I don't have any.
Here's what we know. We know that the streets that have been done out in, in the village have, that have been completed are great streets. The process we went through to, to get those completed are, are, I mean, that, that's a tried and true process. And what I would say is, whenever I've asked the questions, or whenever we look at the CIP internally, or, or in public meetings, and we talk about when these projects go, whenever I tell somebody that a project, that this project is, is slated for twenty-twenty-one, and maybe we need to better clarify things, but that means the process is happening in twenty-twenty-one. When we approve this tonight, the next, the next phase of this is, you know, design and then build, right? And that's, that's a process. I don't wanna rush that and deliver poor streets. I don't wanna rush that and deliver excess cost to, to all of you. But I do wanna make sure that this is carried out in a timely manner. So this is gonna follow the process that we've always used when, I say always, that for a long time we've used, and especially when we, we redid these other, we did these other roads as well, it'll follow that same process, is what you're telling us?
Correct. This like Douglas Runway wrapped up this last year, had obstacles with utilities, lush happen, and not getting relocated in the manner we wanted. And we just kept pushing and pushing and pushing. COVID happened, um, we had rainy weather, but we met the deadline, and we ended up getting it done on time. Um, the only outstanding thing there is seating, and that's just because of, we got the cold weather and a cold knock, till here in the next week or two, we should be able to see them.
Do I have a motion?
I move that Resolution Number twenty-nine nineteen, a determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements for the city of El Dorado, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, subject to protest, paving improvements slash, uh, paving Huntington Road and Simpson Road.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion up here? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We're ready to move forward. The next item on the agenda is agenda item number twelve, paving Fifth Avenue, school to Huntington, and Second Avenue, school to diagonal. And this is the public hearing for that. So I'm gonna open the public hearing for that project. Is there anybody here with a comment on that project?
Kevin of Wisher, three forty-two Simpson. While I'm not directly impacted financially by Fifth or Second, it seems to me like it's a project that also needs to move forward to complete the area. Second Street is direct access road for me onto Simpson. It's not in good shape, it gets a lot of traffic, and it has Sutherland's. So I would- So I would urge you to move this project forward.
Any other comments on this public hearing?
Mayor, I wanted to share with you all one comment from, oh, come on, school. From the gentleman that owns property number seventeen. When we finished Marbiton a year ago, we severed this connection with Diagonal. He's having troubles with vehicles pulling on down the dead end, driving around with barricades or using those driveways to turn around. So we told him, just to make you aware, we told him if we'd work with them on maybe an alternate of killing Second Avenue or moving the dead end a little further west and doing some alternate driveway type situation.
Yeah, I was curious. I actually saw that happen when I was out in Orson last weekend. I was kind of curious if, they just kind of pop right over that? What are they doing?
They're just driving around the barricades through grass and then jumping.
And that barricade's farther, like, back behind his house or to the east?
Yeah, they're about, if you can see that cursor, they're about right in there.
Okay, so what are you thinking? We're not gonna pave that, right?
Yeah, I just, we'll work with them and probably stop pavement further west than it is today and look at a different driveway approach for him.
Is that his driveway approach?
His driveway approach is off Second, right in there. He just wanted y'all and I told him.
Appreciate that. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there any, do I have a motion?
I move the Resolution Number Twenty-nine twenty, a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements for the city of El Dorado, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, subject to protest paving improvements, paving Fifth Avenue and Second Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I want to say like, I drove down this area after a big storm over the weekend and I don't know if there's any other area besides Riverside that needs curbs and gutters more than this area. The gutter or the ditches in this area just are not operating well. Especially, I mean, it was a heavy rain, we got a lot of water, but this area really needs to get that. This is gonna be a huge loss for these homeowners. I do truly believe that. I appreciate that. I agree with that. This, I've been waiting a long time, as have clearly all of you, to get this project completed. I'm excited, you know, for the process to be done and to have all this paved out there. There were a couple of comments tonight that I just wanted to kind of bring back to the attention of maybe David and Scott. There were multiple people that asked questions about the lighting situation out there. And if it pleases the rest of the commission, I'd like to ask staff to help us understand that. I know, having driven out there tonight, that it is darker than most neighborhoods, although it's a pretty tight neighborhood. The roads are kind of tight, some of the trees are, you know, so you don't know. But it's clearly a concern for some in the neighborhood, and I'd like for us to have a better understanding of that. You know, we're obviously gonna make sure intersections are lit and so forth, but it's important for safety and security and and livability to have, to have well-lit neighborhoods. So if you guys don't oppose, I'd like to ask staff to take a look at that. Oh, I agree. And I think that we probably check or work with citizens regularly that come to us with questions about water pressure and we get our staff to kind of help them with that. So I would encourage anyone that had those concerns tonight as well to make sure that you reach out to staff and see what they can do, so.
And PSA, if you have a street light that's not burning, flickering, call us and we'll let Evergy know and they'll get all that.
Because they bill us for it, whether it's burning or not.
That's right.
Going or not, we want it lit.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. We're gonna move on to agenda item number thirteen, project number five sixty, sanitary sewer, South Haberhill.
Yes, we're just asking to set April fifth as a public hearing to close out this project. This was a sewer line extension to serve three properties on Haberhill Road. The final total cost of the project was five thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-three cents.
Okay, do I have a motion to set the public hearing?
I move to set the public hearing for six thirty PM on April fifth, two thousand twenty-one, to be held for the purpose of considering the proposed assessments of the cost of project number five sixty and further direct individual mailings to each owner liable for the special assessments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Next item on the agenda is the District One Forty-two, CDBG Phase Two Public Hearing. Let me find that in here, something. Okay.
So we have a public hearing tonight, considering.
Yes, I'm sorry. Sorry, I just kind of, go ahead.
Consider Phase Two improvements to One Forty-two North Main. That would include replacement of existing windows, doors on the second floor, passenger elevator, accessible restaurants on the second floor, some plumbing and sewer and electrical work. The estimated project cost is three hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. The grant request is two hundred and fifty thousand with a local match of the building owner, by the building owner of ninety-one thousand seven hundred dollars. The city of large, or the city of El Dorado has been costing this project. It is part of the CDBG commercial rehab program through the State of Kansas Department of Commerce. The owners of the building are here as well, Ken.
Okay, well, I'd like to open the public hearing for this District One Forty-two, CDBG Phase Two Public Hearing. I'd like to open that up. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment?
I'll start it off. So I'm Jeff Christensen. I'm one of the business hunters at One Forty-two North Main, the Edward Jones office there. So I can't tell you how many times I've had clients come in that are excited to see the building being rejuvenated. They've heard about the disrepair that it was in from year before. They can't believe the work that's gone on in the building and how, how much improvement's been done. The bold and bildeuse smell has gone. I mean, it's completely turned around. And I think it's important that, I have clients that come in and tell stories about when they were growing up and they were going to farm and home there. It's incredible to have a piece of history that I could be a business owner in. For Nathan and Nicole, as the landlords there in the building, I've been in the business for a little while. They're my third set of landlords that I've had while I've been working for Edward Jones. I can't tell you how responsive they are. They're fantastic. Anything I need, if there's an issue that's going on, they're very attentive. They're fantastic for the people that are working in the building to make sure the stuff that we need is taken care of. He was incredibly accommodating to be on our build out. I mean, they're just fantastic people. I'd love to see a second floor go in and some very neat things happen on the second floor as well. Questions for me?
The area where your office is used to be the china, silver, crystal wedding registry area.
Very neat.
So there's something you can add.
It's a neat piece to know. Like, that's a fantastic thing to know. That's where.
That's what that was.
That's really cool. So I appreciate you guys coming out and seeing the place too.
Yeah, it was great. It was a great visit.
Nice street for me as well, so. But any other questions for me or comments that you guys have questions for me on?
I don't know. I appreciate you coming down and thanks for being one of the, what, six or seven? How many occupants do we have down there now?
So at least one more occupant. Yeah, one more occupant is in the.
In the building. In the building.
Oh, I'm sorry. Four, four different businesses, five businesses there.
We were in there the other day. But yeah, thanks for being part of it.
Who was here that was.
No, 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 it's in the building. Thank you for being one of the, it's great to have that going. I think it's an amazing building. I think the project's amazing, so I appreciate you coming down.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Anyone else want to speak for public, for the public hearing?
Good evening. My name is Emily Canal. I'm director of El Dorado Moon Street Inc. And it's with tremendous appreciation for the commission and for Inc. and for the staff of the city that I am here to thank you for all of the work that it took to bring this building back from the brink of absolute destruction. And it's been a blighted building for many years, whether that's a technical term or not, we all know what I mean by that in our downtown, and a lot of these buildings are considered and are historic assets. And they embody the culture of this town. But more than that, with all of the work that you all have done so far, and it's about the future. It is about building a future on these assets and making it possible for entrepreneurs and people who want to invest and who have many options and still choose El Dorado, to come here to raise their families like the Dinsmeners have done. And I just want to express appreciation for that tremendous collaboration that it has taken to bring this project as far as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, if not, we're gonna close the public hearing. And entertain a motion. There's a handful of different motions. Our options here are to approve the request, deny the request, or request additional information. So I would entertain a motion for one of those.
Just one of them?
Uh, well, I mean. Do we need all, do we need all three of them? We need these three motions unless you want to deny the request or you need more information. If you want to approve the request, we need to roll down this list.
I move to approve Resolution Number Twenty-two one, a resolution certifying.
I'm sorry, Mr. Pusher, the Resolution Number Twenty-nine twenty-one, that was a mistake.
Wasn't my fault though, right?
No.
It is getting late.
It is getting late.
As long as it wasn't my fault. I move to approve Resolution Number Twenty-nine zero, Twenty-nine twenty-one, a resolution certifying legal authority to apply for the Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program from the Kansas Department of Commerce and authorizing the mayor to sign in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, to submit such an application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh.
You want me to keep going?
Keep on trucking, man.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute a contract for administrative services for the Community Development Block Grant.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute all documents required to apply for the Community Development Block Grant.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I have one thing. I want to thank the property owners and the developers for the work you guys have done. The building's amazing. It was great to get to come down and visit and I'm really excited to see what the next phase is. And for the public, the vast public that's listening to this meeting tonight, the things that were described and what are gonna be covered in this are all life, safety, weather, you know, kind of that, those pieces for the building, which are super important, and get us up on the second floor and potentially more, so I really appreciate the work you guys have done, so. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So the last regular, the discussion item on the agenda, Fourth of July fireworks location. Chat and figure out where we want to do fireworks this year. Brief from David. So, you know, we've had them over the years. We've had them at McDonald Stadium. We've had them at Prairie Trails. We've had them at BG one year. We've had them at the lake. Those have all been areas where we've had city-sponsored fireworks. I mean, I don't want to monopolize the conversation. I just wanted to make, because those are the areas where we've done. Do we have a baseball game this year?
So we don't know yet. We haven't heard, I haven't heard from the Broncos to determine what their schedule looks like at this point, so I couldn't tell you unless given it's out here, so I don't know.
I'm not sure that they know yet. That's what I'm trying to. I don't, I don't think that the schedule's out yet.
So can we defer this decision?
Well, I think.
Or do we need to?
So the fourth is on a Sunday. I believe the tentative schedule for Broncos was the third. They had a game on the third, but they, it's not.
They have their plan.
Yeah.
I think. Say what? Of all the children's church. I think that we can, I think that we can probably defer the conversation for a minute, but we can't go too long because these guys have to do some planning. Is that accurate? Could we ask staff to reach back out to the Broncos and see if they confirm it up? If, and that will tell us at least if that's an area for discussion, so. Are you guys okay with pushing this down the road till the next meeting, so they can reach out? I mean, I love the baseball stadium. Like, I love the in-town, you know, all the arguments we make every year. I mean, I, if there's not a baseball game, then I think the other venues open up at that point. But I think that it's, you know, baseball game, fireworks, that's, that's the, that's the big deal in my mind. Sure, I'm disagreeing. I mean, we've always agreed on this piece of it. I like it at the baseball stadium, but I think.
Hundred and fiftieth. Any celebration over the fourth?
So I have plans for events either the week before or the week after the Fourth of July. There's a local group that's going to sponsor a week of kids' events that highlight the Hundred and Fiftieth and do things with kids all week long. I have not, it's set in stone. We're kind of waiting on this decision because the third is Saturday, a portion of, if we did the Fourth of July events on the third, they would kick it off either then or in the week on that day. And then if it's the fourth, it changes things because that's a Sunday.
I mean, I would like for us to be able to hopefully have something to decide on maybe at the next regular commission meeting, but that would, we need to hear something from the Broncos, so. If you guys could bring some information back to us, then we can dive into this and get you a decision so that you can work with those groups. It'd be great to have some Hundred and Fifty stuff included in all this. Maybe Hundred and Fifty times more fireworks.
Yes!
I know that's what Commissioner Wilkinson wants, so I'm here to support. It's not her neighborhood. Is that cool, David?
We're gonna need a motion for the Hundred and Fifty times.
We'll need a motion for that?
Because that means the bill went up a hundred and fifty times.
We're gonna be getting a bunch of IRB to new taxes. We can use that. Okay, so.
If I vote no.
Like, ten years from now.
We gotta have birthday cake and ice cream.
That's right, that's right.
So if I vote no, we won't do it.
We weren't, we're up the. I voted no against masks, we won't do that, so. We're gonna go over here. So city commission and advisory board updates, we're gonna start with you, Kendra.
Parks and Rec doesn't meet until Wednesday.
Library board met on the eighth. Talked about their internet safety policy review. Guess they do that every three years, so. We're doing, they're doing everything that they're supposed to do. The only other thing, they did decide to extend the Saturday hours until two PM over noon, so. And then nine to seven Monday through Thursday and nine to five on Friday. Then I had a couple other things. I was asked by a local landlord if, when we send out a Moe, a Moe order or a Moe letter saying that, I guess we send it registered mail to the to the property owner, would it be possible to send it just first class, just to the address also?
I mean, of course it's possible, yeah.
It is possible. I mean, if it wouldn't be too much of a pain in the butt, if maybe we could do that, because it'd only cost, what, fifty? it'd only cost, what, fifty-two cents instead of six bucks or whatever a registered letter costs? That's all, they're not asking for a registered letter.
Well, I just want to make sure I understand you. Are you saying send it first class to the renter in lieu of the certified letter?
In addition to it.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure.
Either first, of course, then you'd have to give them more time. This person thinks that more times than not, if it was sent to the tenant, the tenant would do it. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, but they seem to think that that would maybe get a fire under them. And then I don't know how many we sent, of those we send out every year, but, you know, I mean, it's what, five, six bucks to send a registered letter or certified letter, whatever. Anyway, just a suggestion. I told them I'd bring it up. And then, uh, owner Scott, I got asked about the excavation on Central in front of Long John Silver's. Is that now, is, is that our doing or is, I thought that was AT&amp;T last, the room I saw there, I thought was AT&amp;T.
There was a water leak, AT&amp;T, um, portion of their line was damaged in the repair of the water line leak, so they've been up there working.
Well, ain't anybody working there for a while. I mean, they left their cones there and they left a, of course, that's, will fill the hole in, but there hadn't been, there hadn't been anybody from AT&amp;T working there for several days.
But, uh, we'll visit with Public Works and I'm sure it's on their schedule or timeframe to get in there and repair that sidewalk and get the street back up.
Yeah, and I'm not even that concerned about the sidewalk. I just got asked about the cones because that, you know, and people just aren't very damn courteous, you know? If you come up and you're on the, on the, in the south lane, they won't let you in. So there's gonna be an incident there. Somebody's gonna get forced into that hole or somebody's gonna come up shooting. That's all I got. I have nothing.
I think today was a very interesting, interesting practice in what we do here with all the people in here today and actually with the multi-different things. It's the first time in two and a half years that we've had really a lot of participation in, in our proceedings. And I just wanted to say that I, I think that that's, that's good. I, I was really happy to see that. I, I've interacted with multiple, just different aspects of our communities last few days and, and I, 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 I like the, the people having the, the passion to have, interact with us. My problem with that, the other side of the coin is, is that a lot of these people that were here tonight were given false information or would have led to believe things that weren't gonna happen. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna reply, I, I got a phone call this weekend from somebody with the, uh, the Little Wildcat, the junior Wildcat football team. And he was led by somebody from the college, is what he said. And I didn't ask who because I, I probably should have dug into it, but he said the college contacted him and said that if we withdrew from the EFABC, that they wouldn't be able to play at the stadium. So, um, and he was very, you know, I mean, I was like, well, listen, the stadium's not going anywhere. Well, that's not what, we were told we weren't being able to use it. And, and I was like, well, who's your contract with? And he talked about the school district, so I'm not sure why the college was telling the junior Wildcats that the school district was gonna do something. I, I like the passion and I'm happy to see that. What I don't like is, is that our citizenry being misinformed by somebody, don't know who, didn't ask, and I really don't care. But what I, what I, I'm trying to, I, 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 that's the, that's the underbelly of what, what happened today. I think if a lot of people have the facts, and I don't know how we do this, David, and I don't understand how we educate any more than you already do, because you do an awful lot when it comes to trying to educate our community. I want to, and I'm gonna give you kudos to that. But I kind of feel like we were, that, that our citizenry was misled in one way or another to believe something that wasn't necessarily true. And I think that us as city leaders need to kind of figure out how that needs to change so our citizenry gets the right information, so they're not fighting a battle that they don't need to fight. I'm not saying that this, this is not something that, I'm saying this is that when they go into a fight, I don't want them thinking of one thing when it's not actually how it's gonna happen. And I just want to say that to our citizens that is, that's just, I mean, the, the, this conversation was not about trying to tear down the football stadium.
No, and I tried, and I tried to.
And I, I think we got that across to them.
I, I don't think she bought it, but.
Well, I, I, I feel like, I, I feel like that, that, that group did understand that at the end of our conversation. But the, the, we just, we, we have to figure out as, I, I would say the true leaders of town, we, we, I mean, we have school board members, we have college boards, we have blah, 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 but when we go, when we go start talking to the, the EFABC, and I'm gonna present it to, I'm gonna push it to you and to you, Bill, that when it, when this, we were sold that we were gonna do things at this, and the letter that they gave us said, well, we could look to see if we could do those things. That, that needs to be a driver in what they're gonna do out there is the ability for us to use that in non-traditional ways that a football stadium needs to be used. I'm fighting for an amphitheater at the lake right now, and that might not happen. We might not be able to do this. We don't know. But we could convert that into doing it at, at the football stadium if, if the non-traditional uses are available, and right now they're not. If that makes it, if, if, and I'm, and I'm, I'm not convinced, I'm not convinced staying or going is right in either way, but I know that we can't use it the way that we wanted to use it in the beginning, ten years ago. And that letter wasn't committal enough that trying to make it where we can use it the way that we need to, to continue being partners and continue being this relationship that our citizens want. I just want to put it that to you guys that in these future conversations that you're having with them, our, our needs need to be addressed also. And I don't think that in that letter was truly committed to that our needs were gonna be, be met. So I just, I, I wanted, I wanted to say that before the topic kind of fluttered into the air and went into the, you know, I, I'm not convinced that our, our needs are met as our school district or our college is, and I want to make sure that we're continuing to fight for those. Because four years ago, we, we, we fought for our, our needs and our uses at the softball fields and at the baseball fields, and we've done that periodically through the last three and a half years that I've been on this board. I don't want, I don't want our needs to be just brushed under the, under the carpet. And that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, man. City manager's report.
So conveniently, I saved my longest report for the longest movie. I'll try to make this real quick. Okay, so, um, El Dorado Week will host a public forum with the developer of the proposed deer rendition on March 22nd at 6:30 PM at Oil Hill Elementary School. The forum, the forum will provide the community with an opportunity to get input from the developer, or not, not to get input, but to get information on the proposed development from the developer prior to the commission, planning commission meeting. The planning commission will then conduct a public hearing on the proposed rezoning on March 25th at 6:30 in this room. It's important that I say that because to Commissioner Gutter's point, there is some misinformation going around about that proposed development. The neighborhood, if you are in that neighborhood, you need to, well, we invite you to go to that meeting to get the inside scoop on what that development will look like, what it will be like. You can ask all of your questions, get all those answered ahead of the planning commission meeting so that you can go to the planning commission fully informed for that development. The city is planning to submit two projects to CADA for state funding to address some of our local street needs that are also state highway needs. The state has a couple programs that we'll be trying to access. We will plan to submit a mill and overlay project for South Main from Central to the BNSF Bridge. This project is estimated to cost $301,000. And then we also plan to submit a mill and overlay on North Main from Sixth to McCollum at an estimated cost of $652,000. If we are awarded funds under these two programs, CADA will pay 90% of the two projects, so we're very hopeful for that because it obviously reduces our share of the cost. And if you've driven on any, any, any part of Main Street, for that matter, you'll notice that it probably needs mill and overlaying. The Senate passed a $1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan on Saturday. We are expecting the city to receive $1.8 million from that bill, so the city commission will need to start thinking about how we're gonna divvy up that money or use that money. We have to use the funds to respond to public health emergency with respect to COVID-19 or its negative impact, economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits, or aid impacted industries such as tourism, travel and hospitality. Also, to respond to workers performing essential work during the pandemic by providing premium pay to eligible workers of the city that are performing such essential work, or by providing grants to eligible employers that have eligible workers who perform essential work. You can also use the money for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of the city due to COVID-19 during the pandemic. And finally, you can use the money to make necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure, so the federal law does kind of limit what we can spend the money on. And in addition to that, additional guidance is forthcoming to clarify some of those categories as well.
Of course it is.
This week, the Kansas Senate will conduct a hearing on Senate Bill 286 that, if adopted as law, could penalize the city for adopting a mask mandate. The bill provides a process whereby businesses could receive reimbursement for the city's share of property taxes and require the city to pay such reimbursement from the general fund. It is not possible to estimate the financial impact of this bill at the present time, although it is reasonable to assume that it could be a pretty big number. The impact could be significant, as many businesses could claim the mandate negatively affected their business, even if only to receive the reimbursement of property taxes. So if you haven't already done so, please get in touch with State Representative Carpenter and State Senator Fag to kind of express your concern about this. I mean, ultimately, this kind of notches into our home, home rule authority and, you know, you guys kind of approved that ordinance because the state wasn't taking action on its own, and so in lieu of state mandate, you thought it was wise to do that. But if this bill goes through, we could be penalized for, for that, for taking that action. So it's retroactive, it's punitive.
Retroactive back how far?
Well, retro back to whenever a mask worked. It goes back to December 1st of 2019, so it would cover pretty much most of our mandate.
December 1st of 2019?
Twenty.
Okay.
Right, yeah, sorry.
So it would cover our entire mandate.
But it, it'll pretty much affect the entire duration of our mandate while it's been in effect.
So I have a question, David. Is there, is there a feeling from the league or anyone else as to what the likelihood of this SB 286 passing committee and then, and then passing a vote is?
So the league mentioned it only in passing in their weekly conference call on Friday, which is how I actually know about the bill, otherwise I wouldn't know about it at all. They kind of mentioned it in passing like, oh, and if you're a city that passed a mask mandate, you might want to check out Senate Bill 286. And because we did, that triggered my, and I did some research and got the, got the thing. My understanding is they're gonna conduct a hearing this week, assuming it gets passed out of the committee. I couldn't tell you what the probability of it being passed or not is, but if it does, it could have an impact on our finances.
Looks like that's what's, we're spending our stimulus money on.
Should, do we, I mean, I guess the question for the commission is, and not tonight necessarily, although if this is the case, maybe sooner or later, do we need to have a discussion about, do we need to revisit the mandate before May 1st to stop the bleeding? I mean, if, if this is gonna pass, that's a month and a half additional out of, I mean, we're, we're three months, December, January, February, so we're three and a half months in. We've got another month and a half left on this till May 1st. I'm just curious if we need to have that discussion with amongst the commission about what that fiscal impact potentially could be, and if, and if we stop the bleeding now or pursue for another 45, 40 days or whatever it is till May 1st.
Do you know what the impact would be on Wichita and Kansas City if that passed? And they have to pay back all their.
Yeah.
All their businesses.
So I look at it like this. Somebody, somebody said that to me as well, and I said, okay, well, if, if I'm the state legislature, I can consider how five people on a dais are gonna vote, or I can consider 300,000 constituents that make up the city of Wichita, or alternatively, even more if you count, you, you count all the people in Central County. So by enacting Senate Bill 286, I get more poll of my constituents than I do with the five people on the dais. So from my math, the probability of it passing concerns me because I think it probably could pass, even though the two largest cities or counties pass mask, mask mandates, the constituency is not the governing body, the constituency is all the citizens that comprise that county that are impacted. So if you do that math, this concerns me a lot, and, and I can't, I can't estimate what this financial impact looks like because I don't know how many businesses would actually go through the process. I don't, I mean, we could determine what the commercial property taxes are, but that's an aggregate number. I, I can't break it down in terms of how many businesses have people that go through their doors versus how many are just, just, you know, so it'd be very difficult to get an estimate on that. But it does concern me because I believe that it probably will pass and it could have a, a significant impact on the state's general fund.
I'd like to see what the burden of proof is on proving that.
If you read the Senate bill, there isn't one.
There what?
So you do have to provide your tax returns and some additional documentation to the attorney general, but the burden of proof, if you will, there's not really a test that you have to meet. The attorney general will review it. They, they will create rules and regulations to administer the act. We don't know what those will look like.
They will, on a case-by-case basis?
No, no, they will create rules and regulations to administer the act, then they will take each case and they will review the, each case to determine if it meets or doesn't, and then, so right now, where we sit, I can't tell you what that looks like.
That was my point.
There's too many.
There's no, see if it gets out of committee first. If it come, if it gets out of committee this week, let's put it on the, the agenda for next week to discuss and cuss.
Yeah, I, I'm not asking for a vote, guys. I'm just telling you guys, this is, this is the potential, I mean, this has a potential for a fiscal impact, so I think we need to discuss the, the options.
Political blackmail is what it's called.
It is, but it's, it's general fund money that.
Right. I mean, that's, that's my concern. Continuing real quick, the El Dorado Police Department received the AAA Kansas Platinum 2020 Community Traffic Safety Award. This is the 12th year that AAA Kansas has awarded law enforcement agencies for traffic safety enforcement. Interestingly, this past year, AAA presented the award to 32 police departments and 11 sheriff's departments throughout Kansas, so ours is in good company. The city will be hosting a spring cleanup drop-off at 222 East Second Street on the east side of Public Works Building, so it's down at Public Works, beginning Monday, May night, I'm sorry, Monday, April 19th through Saturday, April 24th. Citizens may drop off items on Monday through Friday between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM, or on Saturday, April 24th, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Please enter the drop-off area from Griffith Street, and city employees will direct you the rest of the way. There will be no pickup, so don't put things on the curb, they won't be picked up. Also, please remember to bring proof of residency as it is required, so that can be driver's license or a utility bill, something to verify you're within town. Recent legislation approved by Congress will offer assistance to households experiencing financial hardships due to COVID. The Kansas Emergency Rental Assistance Program is funded through the Federal Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021. The Kansas Emergency Rental Assistance Program is funded through the Federal Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021 is being administered by the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. Residents are encouraged to visit kshousingcorp.org for more information about this program if you are experiencing financial hardships. We do have information on our website at eldoks.com for more information as well. Go ahead, T-ball registrations are now open. Participants must be five or six years of age during the 2021 school year to participate. Registration deadline is April 16th. And we also have, uh, this is the last week for you to enter the Step It Up and Walk It Out walking challenge. Residents interested in either of these two programs may sign up at the Parks and Recreation Department at City Hall. Finally, the Eldorado Chamber of Commerce and the Butler County Farm Bureau Association will host a legislative coffee Saturday, March 27th at the Civic Center beginning at 9:00 AM. The event is free and open to the public. State representatives anticipated to attend include State Representatives Avery Anderson, Doug Black, Will Carpenter, and State Senator Mike Fag. That's all I have for now.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move with adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. As opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.